Good evening. I'm Erin Boucher, chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee, and welcome to our meeting for Wednesday, November 5th. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live on Selco Channels 29 and 329 and streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connection's website. Thank you to Liz Poploski and Shrewsbury Media Connection for their assistance with our broadcast. Tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast on SMC's website and their YouTube channel between now and our next scheduled meeting. The first item on the agenda is public participation. Tonight, we have not received any requests to speak at public participation. Public participation is available to all residents who would like to address the committee regarding concerns on policy, budget, and the performance of the superintendent. In the future, if anyone would like to speak at public participation, they can contact the chair in advance of the next meeting. The next item on the agenda is chairperson and members' reports. Colleagues, anything to share this week?
Yeah.
And the next item on the agenda is superintendent's report. Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you, Ms. Boucher. A few things to report on this evening. The first is I do want to make the community aware that yesterday I communicated that based on several situations that have happened over the course of this fall where students who were riding motorized e-bikes had been involved in different unsafe situations that endangered themselves and others, that myself and other school leaders here in the district have become increasingly concerned about the potential for serious injury or worse. And we know we've seen information about that that have happened elsewhere in the Commonwealth and across the country. And because of the potential for serious injury, because of the speed that these motorized bicycles have and scooters, difficulty for drivers to avoid them and even see them, and certainly the heightened risk of what we think of accidents to riders and pedestrians and vehicles as well. In consultation with the Shrewsbury Police Department, I made the decision to effective tomorrow, Thursday, November 6th, motorized e-bikes and scooters are prohibited from all Shrewsbury Public Schools campuses. This prohibition applies to e-bikes that are classified as Class II electric bicycles under Massachusetts state law. And so they're motorized. This does not apply to what are known as Class I electric bicycles. Those are the bicycles that have pedal assist only, can't be propelled into their own power. Those continue to be allowed, and certainly traditional bicycles continue to be allowed as well. I've had some supportive feedback with regard to this decision, but ultimately, we think it's in the best interest and the safety of our students and our citizens. So that was an announcement that was made yesterday. It goes into effect tomorrow. Additionally, I want to make the community aware of a few things that are happening in our schools. First off, I want to congratulate all of our Shrewsbury High School athletes who have been participating in this fall season. It's coming to a close for most teams. Many did make the playoffs. I think some are still competing. I was able to go to the volleyball game last night. It was a tough loss at the end of an excellent season. Was able also yesterday to attend the senior game for our unified basketball team, which was a terrific event. But for all of our athletes and coaches and their efforts this fall, I want to congratulate them. Also want to mention that upcoming, we have a couple of ways for our community to experience our phenomenal arts, both performing and visual arts. As far as visual arts, we have artwork on exhibit at the Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union that is on display all throughout the month of November. Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union is a wonderful partner to us, and we appreciate them providing that space to display our artwork. So please stop by and check that out. Yesterday, I had an opportunity to visit the newly renovated weight room and exercise room at Shrewsbury High School that was made possible by a very generous donation of Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union, as well as the Shrewsbury High School Athletic Boosters. It's a wonderful, much improved space for our students, which we appreciate. And so again, we thank Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union for that as well. We have an upcoming performance of our fall play. The Shrewsbury High School Performing Arts Department will present the fall play, which is Clue, on November 14th and 15th at 7:00 PM each evening in the Shrewsbury High School Auditorium. It does include some material that's more suitable for students ages grade seven and up, is what we would suggest in terms of the audience. They do an excellent job with this production every year, so look forward to that. And if you have the chance to come out and support our drama students, that would be terrific. And then finally, I did want to mention again that the, as a result of so many of our residents in the community, including many of our students, losing access to SNAP benefits, we remain very concerned about the impact on those families. I communicated earlier this week with the community, you know, almost one in five of our students in Shrewsbury qualifies as low income. Approximately 15% of our students are currently receiving SNAP benefits. That translates into almost 900 students in our district. And right now, they are facing a difficult time because of the pause in those benefits due to the government shutdown. There is information on our website. If you are a family in need of help, there is a link where you can fill out a form to get confidential assistance. If you are interested in helping families in need, and I really appreciate that as of today, almost $3,000 worth of supermarket gift cards have been brought to our different school offices and contributed. We're also collecting food and toiletries that we are transporting each day to St. Anne's Food Pantry here in town. There is a link on that website to various information about where families can access help in the area if they are experiencing food insecurity. We have the community fridge here right next to the senior center. There's a pantry in the senior center during senior center business hours. St. Anne's, of course, is a wonderful partner that provides food to area residents every Monday. And so if you are able to make a contribution and donate, we really appreciate your generosity. It makes a difference. No children in our community should be going hungry. And again, really so pleased with the response so far, and we'll continue to need more. So thank you to everyone who's made that contribution. And again, you can click on the link on our website that's featured under the news items on our homepage if you'd like more information. And that is superintendent's report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. The first item on our agenda this evening is an update from the Town of Shrewsbury 300th Anniversary Committee. The Town of Shrewsbury will celebrate its 300th anniversary in 2027. In November of 2024, the Select Board established a nine-member 300th Anniversary Celebration Committee charged with the planning and execution of townwide activities to commemorate the anniversary. At our meeting tonight, we have Vice Chair Nicole Torres, who will present an update on behalf of the 300th Anniversary Celebration Committee. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you. So good evening, Dr. Sawyer and school committee members. I'm Nicole Torres, the Vice Chair of the 300th Anniversary Celebration Committee. The other members of the committee who could not join tonight are John LeBeau, Chair, Melanie Petrucci, Clerk, Gail Azlanian, James Joliker, Carol Ann McAdams, Moira Miller, Anan Sharma, and Seva Subramanian. So I would like to start by thanking you for setting aside time tonight to hear more about the 300th Anniversary Committee, the goals that we have as a committee, what we've been up to since our inception, and how the school's teachers, and especially our children in town, can become involved in our town's birthday celebration. As a parent of two young children in our public school system, I know how busy you all are, so I would like to personally thank you on behalf of the committee for giving me your ears tonight. By way of background, I know you already went into this a little bit, but our committee was established by the Select Board on November 28th, 2023, and appointments were made to the committee in February 2024. The committee has been meeting monthly since March 2024, and the second Wednesday of the month at 6:30 PM in one of the police station meeting rooms. And the committee follows the open meeting law relative to posting agendas and minutes for our meetings. At the November 2023 meeting, the Select Board created our charge and established our mission, which is to research, evaluate, make recommendations, and coordinate the townwide activities to commemorate the 300th anniversary of the incorporation of the Town of Shrewsbury in 2027. So our town's actually older than the United States, which is pretty cool. Since our committee has formed, we've had two public forums to solicit community feedback, presented to several groups in town, and we have been a part of both the Spirit, both Spirit of Shrewsbury's for the last two years, as well as last year's Yuletide Market, and we're going to be at this year's Yuletide Market as well with merch, so keep an eye out. Additionally, as of late, we've been targeting various community groups and businesses to cast the widest net possible with the goal of reaching as many of our community members as we can. We feel as though the celebration will be most impactful if we're celebrating in all of the ways that reflect our town's rich, varying cultures, experiences, interests, and backgrounds. Because of this, we know community involvement and feedback are crucial to a successful celebration. After soliciting community feedback, we've also started to cement our programming timeline for our, so to speak, capstone events that the committee will personally host. Our inclination is that the anniversary celebration will consist of several events spread throughout late 2026 and all of 2027, not just one large singular event, and that community groups will be strongly encouraged to sponsor their own events in conjunction with the capstone celebrations and to coordinate those smaller events with the committee's support. We're planning a kickoff in December of 2026, as the date of the town's incorporation was December 15th, 1727, ideally linking our kickoff to that year's Yuletide Market. During 2027, we're hoping we will gain the interest of various organizations, institutions, businesses, and individuals to host events, tailoring their particular focus areas with the 300th anniversary celebration. Larger events the committee is planning include our kickoff at the Yuletide Market, fireworks and/or a laser show. There's, everyone's split on that, on what we want to do. A 300th anniversary parade, opening the 50-year time capsule that's currently outside of Town Hall, and then a final culminating event of a 300th anniversary gala. We've been very lucky to speak to many members of the town to find out what they are looking for and want to see for the town's 300th anniversary celebration. Perhaps the biggest untapped group who we have yet, who may get the most excitement out of the town's birthday celebrations is our schoolchildren in town. My kids are like so pumped. I can't even begin to describe it to you. We're looking to get the children, teachers, faculty, and staff in both our public schools as well as our many private schools in town excited about the idea of Shrewsbury turning 300 years old. We all know how much children love commemorating their own birthdays, and we're sure that they will find so much excitement and joy in celebrating the birthday of the town in which they live and go to school. We think it's essential that we involve the schools in our town's celebration to not only get the children excited about the past of Shrewsbury, but also help them to recognize they're also shaping the future history of our town. We would happily welcome any and all ideas from those involved in the schools, and we would be thrilled to collaborate with the school committee and the schools on ways we can get the kids and school staff involved in celebrating the town's 300th anniversary. I want to mention that outside of reading our very exciting meeting minutes or attending one of our meetings or future forums, community members are always welcome to email the committee at 300th, so 300TH@shrewsburyMA.gov, and all of the committee members' email addresses are also on the website as well. With all that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the 300th Anniversary Committee or anything I've shared, or would be open to any preliminary ideas you may have based on my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any tips you can give us about the merch that's going to be?
There was a lot of discussion about the merch. We do have shirts, and children's sizes will be available as well. I believe sweatshirts, hats. We were giving out, not pens, but like for a smart, like a smart pen. We gave those out. They went out like wildfire. We had tote bags. We sold out of those or ran out of those. We were just giving them away. Yeah, they basically just have our kind of preliminary logo on them right now, but they will be available at Yuletide. We're trying not to have too much merch on hand. I think our Chair, John LeBeau, was terrified of us having hundreds of 300th Anniversary T-shirts in 2028 or 2029. But yes, definitely T-shirts and sweatshirts.
I think people are asking. I've heard that already, like, are they going to have things for this? And it's part of the fundraising, I assume, for?
Yes. So right now, the committee has bought the items, but we're looking to work with other groups in town. We have a lot of things really in the works. Ideally, we're not holding on to a bunch of merchandise, and we can work with local partners in town, and there are many of them. And we are trying, I should mention, anything that the committee does, obviously, we are trying to stay within Shrewsbury for vendors and things like that, really trying to give back to the businesses in town. So yes, you can be on the lookout for some T-shirts. We've had stickers floating around. It's kind of a chicken or egg when it comes to the celebrations of the merch or anything. We're really looking to solicit feedback. We don't want to tell people what they're going to get. We want to hear what people want and then give them what they want. So when people would say to us at the beginning, you know, something like merch or events, we're like, you tell us what you want, and we can build around that. So fireworks and parade is what we heard loud and clear from a lot of people.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming. This is exciting. Do you have, it seems like you want to leave it sort of up to the school district, individual schools, on how they're involved versus, does the 300th Committee sort of have an idea of how they'd like to see?
Yeah.
The schools involved? Because I think that we are just so rich. I know you having kids in the school.
Yep.
Every single school is so different from each other, and it truly makes up Shrewsbury. So if you had any ideas, that would be great, but I think for us, being able to get the teachers, the students involved to kind of create their own thing would be?
Yeah.
Good, too.
Yeah, I mean, I think for, so I have an eight-year-old and a six-year-old. They would love something like a scavenger hunt, or I know my children, anybody get captain of the day in gym, they're pumped, you know, something with the 300th logo. They can color. I don't think the high schoolers may be into coloring. Maybe I'm wrong. But for them, maybe there's an essay contest, or, you know, it could really be anything and everything. And my hope and the hope of the committee is that the students come forward with their own ideas of how they want to see. Again, instead of them doing something they're kind of forced to do, it's more so, hey, if one of them, you know, you have a student athlete who's really into running and they want to get involved in a road race. I mean, the ideas are really endless. But especially for the younger kids, even just making them aware that the town's turning 300 years old, and I really do think it's a cool fact that the town is older than the United States. And a lot of people don't know that in town. They don't realize that. So yes, we do have ideas, and it obviously would vary for the schools and the ages and things like that, but we're really trying to meet anyone where they're at in terms of their idea. So we have our capstone events, and then anything else that we can partner with or co-sponsor, so to speak. We're also up against fundraising, just like anything else, and we have a very limited amount of funds that we can use, and we are trying to spend wisely. So anything that we can partner, co-collaborate, we're really interested in doing that. But I just, you know, it's, again, I think no one would be more excited than the kids to celebrate something like this. And I just see the level of attendance, you know, when kids get excited about something, families go, and then more people go. So the more we can get the kids excited, I think it'll just make a bigger celebration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for presenting the update on the committee. One, as you're presenting it, I was thinking about it. So we did something like NPS, when NPS turned, it's 200 to 50 years of celebrations. They solicited what America means to you, like a write-up, sort of die, like a painting or whatever it is. So maybe we can do the same thing with the students.
I love that.
Like, what does Shrewsbury mean to you in the past and where you see it in the future?
I love that.
Essay writings, paintings.
Yeah.
Would be wonderful.
Yeah, I love that. And a big part of our theme is really bridging past and present because there's so much rich history of our town and looking at how diverse our culture is compared to what it was 300 years ago. It's really incredible to be able to see. And if you look at the logo for the 300th anniversary, it's very intentional that we have the bridge in there, and, you know, the symmetry of bridging past to present, it was very intentionally done as well. And I love, you know, asking the kids, what does Shrewsbury mean to you? And I, you know, it's interesting to think what that would mean to my six-year-old versus an 18-year-old, you know, Shrewsbury High School senior who's going to be venturing off to college. It would be really, really fascinating to see, so I love that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for coming this evening and getting the ball rolling for us to start thinking about all this. It's going to be here before we know it. So we appreciate you coming by and kind of sharing your thoughts and giving us the timeline because I think that's very helpful.
Yeah. Thank you.
No, thank you, Ms. Torres. Appreciate that, the work you and then the committee are doing. Although I will no longer be in this role, when the time comes, I am confident that the district will play a major role in celebrating the work of the, the celebration of the birthday of the community. Some of the things you're mentioning are great ideas, and Mr. Vellacaputi, I think that in terms of the, I think of, you know, certainly our music performance groups, our marching band, if there's going to be a parade, you know, certainly there'll be events, and I know that we're always proud to have our group participate. Secondly, I think that certainly the history piece, I know Mr. Bizilow, the high school principal's here this evening. I'm sure that Ms. DiFrancesca, the Director of Social Sciences, certainly she's always been able to connect our students and faculty when there's interesting things happening around Shrewsbury history. They did a lot of work when the Beal School, for example, in creating that timeline around Major Beal and his history, but that's a very rich topic. Writing opportunities for students that, like were mentioned, I think, is something. Knowing that we have a retail establishment in the center of the community in Maplewood, Maine, both, I'm sure we can work something out to make sure that, you know, if you're looking to sell merch and have it on sale, you know, in a place that people can access. And also, I'm sure that our students in the RISE program would be more than happy to work together with the committee around their excellent at designing their own logos and creating merch.
We would love that.
So, yeah, I mean, you know, can be variations on the theme, but I'm sure that they'll will want that. I know they participate in the Yuletide Market as well, and it's just a really great, we love that that program is central to the community, literally and figuratively. So that's another thought that I have. But certainly, I will mention it to our leadership team, and we'll start to prepare, and we should start, obviously, to be in communication as things draw closer around very specific ways that the schools can support this. I 100% agree that when our students are aware of these kinds of things, there'll be a level of excitement, and we want to be a great partner to celebrate this because it's really a great opportunity to celebrate our community. So.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Talk to you all soon.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda this evening is the acceptance of grant funding. Dr. Lazzat and Ms. Aries will ask the committee to accept three grants tonight totaling $205,000. The first is a Skills Capital Grant for $145,000 from the Executive Office of Education. The second is an Innovative Career Pathways Implementation and Support Grant from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in the amount of $50,000, and a work-based learning implementation grant of $10,000 from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So turn it over to you, Dr. Lazzat and Ms. Aries. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much for inviting us. We're very happy to have received word over the past few months regarding these three grants that are up on the screen in front of you and viewers at home. I would like to thank, we have a couple of people here with us tonight, Angie Flynn and Todd Bizilow, who along with Dave Riscosi and teachers at the high school, and I wrote the first, the Skills Capital Grant back in May 2024. And since that time, we have been reaching out to see if there's any word on us receiving the grant. And we heard recently that we did receive the grant. And I just want to thank everyone who spent a lot of time writing the grant, applying for it, and certainly Karen Aris, since she has joined our team, has consistently sought to find ways to fund our Innovation Career Pathways programming, along with our career technical education offerings and opportunities for students. So Karen will speak about the Innovation Career Pathways Implementation and Support Grant just a bit, and the Work-Based Learning Implementation Grant. Here on the screen, we have a picture of some students from Shrewsbury High School exploring the anatomage table as they view a real cadaver skeleton. The Innovation Career Pathways Grant provides opportunities for educator training as those relate to resources, including the anatomage table and curriculum development. Additionally, givers, including the Shrewsbury Colonial Fund, community partners, provide the funds needed to purchase equipment. So as we all know, it takes a village to make these things happen, and again, just really grateful to our community and community partners and those in our schools for contributing to the efforts. So this Skills Capital Grant funding supports the purchase and installation of modern equipment that supports our CTE and training aligned with high-demand industries such as advanced manufacturing, again, while expanding access to career-connected education. In this photo, you see science and engineering teachers, Pat Collins and Ricky Doherty, and they are in front of a router, a CNC router, and a student there on a desktop computer. Both of these pieces of equipment were made possible through the grant, and these computers are equipped with CAD software, virtual reality welding units accompany them, and a number of other pieces of equipment that we can talk about if you would like.
Did you want to talk about what we're getting?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, we had put in for, well, you had written the grant for this in May 2024, and since it took a year and a half for them to get to us, we have to amend the grant because we have since got, received this equipment from our donors. We still need more computers, so we're going to do that. We're going to request another, a larger CNC router and possibly a laser engraver. So we're working with a team on that. Mr. Bizilow and Dave Riscosi and the engineering teachers were after school today, with a sales representative looking at the space and getting some quotes to amend that grant. So this was our first go-around, and we're happy to, now have been teaching it for a year, and everyone getting used to the curriculum and kind of being like, yay, now we can get even bigger and better things that help our students. The Innovation Career Pathways Implementation and Support Grant is a $50,000 grant that we are eligible for every year for the next three years, having received the Innovation Career Pathways Program designation for biomedical science and advanced manufacturing. So we work on this every summer. It's due, you know, every July. Things that it does support are teacher stipends for professional learning, contracted services, for example, trips to the BV Hub for our advanced manufacturing students, transportation for career exploration trips and other field trips, and supplies, especially for our Project Lead the Way classes, which are, we use to augment the consumable supplies. So, yeah, we are eligible for that for the next three years.
The grant also provides students access to industry-recognized credential courses, including OSHA 10 and other career exploration and manufacturing workshops, et cetera, as Karen explained.
The Work-Based Learning Implementation Grant for $10,000 is something that was released this summer and that I was happy to explore and write, also with help from Angie Flynn, and will be supported by our school counselors. So this is going to help us explore a tool called MiFA Pathways, which is a college and career learning tool with also a work-based learning component. So it's a free tool. We started to look at it last year with things like, for example, students can enter journal entries for any experience that they've had from freshman year up until senior year. It's very similar to Naviance, and so we really need to explore the tool as we look at how it's going to work within our school and our innovation career pathways. Implementing MYCAP is a component of Innovation Career Pathways, and so the MiFA Pathways tool is critical to that work. So what it also will help me do, the grant was written to support counselor stipends to help learn the tool and to also help implement a start of an internship program. So the work-based learning tool has places for me to document employer partners and students for them to select or, you know, see which internship they've been hired for, and then they get reviews and so forth like this, forms just sent right out through the tool. It also allows me to join a community of practice with other schools in Massachusetts who are using this tool as well as they continue to build the tool, which is supported by DESI. Yeah, so that's a little bit about those grants.
Do you want to share some ways in which we communicate with students?
Sure. So, sure. So the internship program that I'm, I'm looking at to start this year will, will be based on students that have, we already know that are interested through an application that they did last year when they were registering for course selection, or they have talked to their counselors, they've talked to me. We, we communicate with students of various, numerous ways. We put things out on Schoology, and always are talking through their teachers and their counselors. I email, you know, students as well as their counselors on a regular basis. So, yeah.
Great.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you for the time that you take to write these grants, because it is very time-consuming, but it adds to the budget for ways that we can't afford to do all these things. And these are needed things, I think, to move these programs forward. And I was particularly intrigued by the last, this last grant, because we're, we're talking about getting students to understand career, or college, or, you know, looking at internships and helping them figure out the best path, maybe, as a high school senior or junior. And I, that one of my questions and your answer was, how will students and families find out about these tools for them to kind of dig in deeper? And again, we don't have the money in our budget now to do these things, so thank you. This is above and beyond, I think, your regular jobs. So we really appreciate it because it adds to the experience, what we're trying to push forward and the way we're educating students now. It's very different. And these are the things we need to do. So thank you.
I'd just like to reiterate the same point about just the amount of work that goes into these grants. They're not automatic, and you need to stick with them. And in, in the case of what you described, amendments were needed to get things forward. So thank you to everybody involved. Two hundred and five thousand dollars going to CTE and just career pathways, just, I think, just furthers what we wanted to do over the last, you know, two, three years to improve access for students to these opportunities. And the MIFA Pathways thing is interesting, too, that ten thousand dollar grant here is just to implement this program, right?
Right.
For future years, like, is it just something that's going to be there? Is there any, like, fees?
So, from my understanding, because I have already been, attended one of the community of practice meetings, this is a grant that there's several, there's several high schools that this is their second year. So, yes, I'm encouraged by that.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And if I'd have known, I would ask for more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Appreciate all the work and support for the students. So thank you.
I too, thank you for putting the work into looking for these grants, because all these investments that it's not in our budget to, to do, this just enhances the programs, and it makes what we offer the students even better. We could offer the classes, but without the extras that you're putting into, that's really what makes it special. That's really what drives the, the students to want to continue on these programs and go and find these internships and get involved. I do have one quick question, maybe it's quick. So the MIFA Pathways, are we just focusing on the high school? Because when I went and read through the, the report you had, when I went to MIFA, it said that the curriculum, the MCAP, it can do it in grade six through twelve. Are we still just focusing on the high school? Or are we talking about Sherwood and Oak at some point?
We are exploring the opportunities, hopefully, of, of doing more things at the middle school to align it, so that students will have more opportunity and career exploration, so that they can, you know, be even more ready for high school to kind of dive into what they're looking for.
And specifically at Oak, at grade seven and eight, right now, we're making some step, moving forward. And again, growing our, the opportunities for students to experience lunch and learn and guest speakers, and the career days withheld at Oak, and really trying to, to find different ways to tap into, first, understand what students may or may not be interested in, and then encouraging them to take advantage of whether it's a lunch and learn or signing, signing up for different workshops that are offered. And that, that again, is educating teachers so they know what's available, families and the students themselves.
Yes, I echo the same sentiment, like, thanks for the, all the hard work in getting these grants, which are very critical for our students, in getting involved in the career pathways and exploring other opportunities up there. My question, one, one quick question related to the innovation grant, that is that, is that a one-time grant? Like, it's three years? Do we have to apply?
Every year you have to apply again. So it's, the, the schools who are first, like, say, we were designated to, this is our second year, so we can apply for five years. So it basically helps us get started with these programs.
But it's not guaranteed every year you get it? Or, sort of?
Well, we're in a better position, having received it.
That's, that's good. Even better.
Yes, exactly.
So with the EOE grant funding, so is that, are we already, like, acquired the equipment that is through other sources? So what's a, is that a one, is there anything else that can we, we can utilize those funds for, for a better use? Or is like, we're getting a next, bigger?
Yeah, so we, if I understand your question, yes, we, basically, we applied in May twenty twenty-four because we were implementing these new programs, and we really wanted and needed equip, equipment. Last year, we still needed the equipment, and we hadn't received the grant. So our Colonial Fund and donors, we used for the mill and the computers in one of the engineering rooms. And later on, we received the Anatomage Table. That still left a void. We, we still needed more computers. And now that our manufacturing program has been up and running for a year, they're like, oh, if we only had this machine. So that's what it is allowing us to do. And then they said, with the new building, we can even get more.
We need space, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation and for all the work that goes into securing these funds for us. We're very grateful. I did have a question with regard to the work-based learning. There was a note in your report that some of the funds could be used in collaboration with a consultant to help structure the internships program. If you could just elaborate on that a little bit?
Sure. So, as Dr. Lazzott said, it takes a village, right? And I'm only one person, and the, that we have, really to create a vibrant internship program, a lot of our community partners are just so willing, and they need structure. So the, the consultant will be brought on to really organize that and to work with especially our industry partners to, you know, say, let's organize job descriptions and tasks and projects and check-ins, and really a nice structure that can be repeated year after year. And so what I'm looking to do is create like a trial, like a cohort, and work with that consultant and the students per, you know, with industry partners to develop that program. So that's my hope with this grant.
Great.
I don't know if you know, but last year, we had three interns out in the community, and there they are. And we had one at Maple and Maine, one at an optometrist, she's checking my eyes, she did an amazing job, and one at Reliant Medical, right down the street. So, so I hope to have a little bit more of this share.
Fantastic. Thank you. Dr. Sawyer?
I want to thank Dr. Lazzott and Ms. Aries for their, their work on this, and everyone else, Ms. Flynn, Mr. Riscosi, Ms. Bizidlo, the team at the high school. You know, this is funding that really benefits our programming, and, and these are central to the strategic priorities that the school committee set out for us in our five-year plan three years ago. And so it's really gratifying to see the progress we've made in a short amount of time. But a lot of that progress has been fueled by these kinds of investments that are coming from the state. Because the state has interest in this, too, that they're, they're trying to promote these kinds of career technical education programs in traditional high schools like ours. And it's really terrific, mostly, the most important piece is to see the things that this experience the students are having now, which weren't possible just a couple of years ago. So thank you for the efforts for that. We look forward to seeing how these additional resources have an impact this year. And again, as was mentioned, it's a lot of work and time invested on your part, so we appreciate that greatly, and thank you for those efforts.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We do need to take a vote.
Oh, yes.
That the committee vote to accept the three grants totaling two hundred and five thousand dollars in funds as presented, and use such funds for their intended purpose. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the Shrewsbury High School Testing Annual Report. Each year, a report is presented that includes Shrewsbury High School student performance data, standardized tests, including the SAT and AP tests. Mr. Bizidlo, Ms. Flynn will summarize the report and be available to answer questions for us this evening. So thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having us. Let me just pull the screen up here. Thanks for having us. We're happy to share the results from the two thousand twenty-five test administration. And I'll turn it over to Mrs. Flynn to go through the beginning of our slide deck. She'll cover most of the SAT work, and I'll cover the advanced placement work, and we'll open up for any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Okay. So there's three standardized tests that are used in college admissions, primarily the PSAT and MSQT. This is, NMSQT stands for the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. The PSAT is basically a practice SAT. We do give this in the fall to our juniors. So it's typically, it's October. So the results from this presentation are from October of two thousand twenty-four. Last year, we, all of our spots were taken by juniors, so we did have one date in the spring that the sophomores took the PSAT, but they actually took a different exam called the PSAT-ten, which is a different exam than the PSAT-NMSQT. So all of the results from this presentation are based on the, the PSAT-NMSQT exam by juniors. Then there's the SAT and ACT. This is what is primarily used in college admissions. It's a college entrance exam. Since the pandemic, colleges have primarily shifted to a test-optional admissions basis for these exams, so students can opt to send their exam scores. There are increasingly more and more colleges that are now requiring this. Every year, there seems to be a few more that are added to the list. And then we have our advanced placement exams. Advanced placement exams are part of an AP course. There's probably two pieces to this. There's, you know, AP courses on a transcript help students get into college, and then there's the exam grade, and that can be given, college credit can be given for that, depending on the college. So a couple changes, and these really aren't changes anymore. In the two thousand twenty-one SAT eliminated optional exams, including the SAT essay and SAT subject tests, so those are no longer available for students to take. And I just mentioned that most colleges are test-optional, about eighty percent. And then there's also test-blind. There's about a hundred schools that are test-blind, which means if students submit their test scores, they won't even look at them. Test-optional means they will look at them as part of the process, admissions process. Test-blind, they won't look at them. And last year, the SAT program had a little bit of an increase from the year before. Two thousand twenty-four, the class of two thousand twenty-four, one point nine seven million students took it. And then this two thousand twenty-five, it was up to two million. And we see that because as, you know, college admissions becomes more competitive, more students want to submit SAT scores. The SAT scores are scored on, there's a scale, it's two hundred to eight, eight hundred per test. There's the evidence-based reading section, and then the math section. So if you combine those two, the highest score you can get is sixteen hundred. So we did quite well this year. The class of two thousand twenty-five, we, our overall score increased by eleven points from the previous year. And that, I can't see very well. So the, our total, our score this year, our average total score is twelve twenty-two, and the year before it was twelve eleven. For our writing score, we also increased, we did, we increased by sixteen points, which is, that's a very good increase. And that, from six twelve, so that's over the six hundred mark for our average evidence-based reading and writing score. And then for our math score, we did decrease, but only by five points, so six ten, so not bad at all. So we did quite well. Our participation rate, we went from eighty percent in the class of two thousand twenty-four to seventy-five, seventy-five percent in two thousand twenty-five. That's pretty much the same. You will see, you know, before COVID, we were up in the ninety percents, but as I said, you know, COVID happened, the pandemic, it became test-optional, and students are not always taking the exam.
Right, so I'll take it from here and talk a little bit about the gender distribution of both the math and reading and writing scores. So if you look across the top table here, there were six hundred and three males that participated in SA three, SATs last year, and six hundred and twenty-two females, so the difference was nineteen more females to males. The Massachusetts, sorry, the scores, rather, were six oh three for the males and females, and six twenty-two. A difference, females outscored males in the reading and writing. And across, looking left to right, you see the Massachusetts scores of five seventy-one for males and five sixty for females, and the national scores of five twenty to five twenty-two. And the difference between Shrewsbury High School and other students in Massachusetts was plus thirty-two for males and plus sixty-two for females, and the difference in national average is plus eighty-three points and plus one hundred points, pretty strong. And again, why we're one of the best states and nation when it comes to education. You look at the math scores, equally impressive, females outperformed males this year at SHS, which is something that typically is, is, is a little bit, hasn't happened in the past that frequently. They scored an average of six thirteen, where males were six oh eight. And again, Massachusetts scores for males were six, five sixty-three, and females were five thirty-three, and then nationally, five fifteen for males and five hundred for females. And if you look at that SHS math scores versus Massachusetts, females scored eighty points higher than their, their contemporaries that took the SAT in the state, and males scored forty-five points higher than boys in the state of Massachusetts. And we look at the national average, females scored a hundred and thirteen points higher on their SAT in math, and males scored ninety-three points higher. Some extraordinary results from, really some extraordinary work done by the faculty at the high school in terms of preparing students not only for the standards as it relates to the curriculum frameworks, but also for preparing for tests like this. Just, just a bar graph in terms of the, the scores that were represented in the graph. We have the critical reading and writing scores, and then the math scores by male and female, males in the blue, and females in the red, and females in the two thousand twenty-five testing year outperformed males. We also take a look at demographics, and this is all self-reported information, so it's not particularly, I don't want to say accurate, but not particularly clean. It's as clean as it's, it's self-reported. So in terms of our population by ethnicity and race, if you look on the left-hand column, we have the categories of Asian, Latino, Hispanic, Black, African-American, White, No Response, and multirace. Anything under, I believe it's five percent, they don't report out the scores for us. But going left or right across the Asian row, combined score of thirteen sixteen, Hispanic-Latino, ten sixty-seven, White, eleven seventy-nine, and the No Response was twelve fifty-four. And back to Mrs. Flynn.
Yes. So our PSAT scores this year, students can be, based on their scores, they can be commended and a finalist or a scholarship recipient. That's what the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test is for. So this year, we jumped twenty-two students from two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-five. We had twenty-nine students commended based on their PSAT score. Two were scholarship finalists.
Right. As Mrs. Flynn said, we have advanced placement courses at the high school. There's two components of it. There's actual courses you take that can be placed on a transcript that can provide some weight in terms of college admissions. Additionally, if you score a qualifying score of a three, four, or five, some colleges and universities will allow you to get credit for those courses, which can allow students in our community to graduate potentially early from college, saving thousands of dollars in terms of tuition and cost courses. So just six quick highlights for the community and the committee. We've increased the number of students taking the exams by fifty-eight. We have five oh four, five hundred and four students last year taking AP exams. The number of AP exams has reached an all-time high at eleven hundred and sixty exams. That's a hundred and eighty-three more than last year. Really remarkable, and really kind of a highlight for us is that fifty-seven percent of the class of two thousand twenty-five took at least one AP exam. That's really remarkable across not only the state, but also the nation. Thirty-five percent of the exams administered resulted in a five, which is a Thirty-five percent of the exams administered resulted in a five, which is the highest score possible and potentially available for college credit, uh, when students enroll in college or university. Fifty-seven students participated in a virtual high school or self-study exams. And, uh, the total number of courses offered through SHS were twenty-four. There are nineteen actually on-ground courses at the high school, three courses offered through virtual high school. They were microeconomics, macroeconomics, and US government. And we had two courses offered through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Grant, which has since been eliminated as a result of some of the cuts at the federal level. That grant is not available this year, so we will not have anyone in those two subject areas, but Computer Science A and Computer Science Principles. A linear graph, just to show you, the blue line is the number of students from two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty-five. Two hundred eighty-nine students in two thousand sixteen, five hundred and four in two thousand twenty-five, continually increasing. And then across the top, the red line is the number of exams were administered. And we basically doubled the number of exams since two thousand sixteen, uh, for our students. And a lot of this has to do with our efforts around program studies and offering students and trying to push students into really challenging and stretching their academic, uh, abilities to provide them opportunities to participate in this. We know that when students participate in advanced placement courses, they, uh, have higher retention rate at post-secondary universities and are generally, uh, better prepared for the rigor of a college course and balancing the amount of coursework. So, it's a win-win for the students that participate. And even students who do not do well necessarily on an advanced placement exam, just the participation in the course prepares them for the type of rigor that they're going to see at the college and university. So, uh, if you're listening in the audience, I'd encourage parents to stay tuned for Advanced Placement Night, which will happen in February. Learn more about advanced placement. We certainly want to continue to encourage students to participate in those exams, uh, those classes to extend their academics the best they can. Really busy bar graph here, folks, sorry. This is, uh, SHS is in blue, the Massachusetts, uh, mean scores and national scores. And you look across, uh, you look across and it's a sea of blue, quite frankly. We're above both Massachusetts average and national averages in every test except, uh, that is, it says human geography, I think that should be Chinese, actually. Should be Latin, sorry, we're going off there. So, that's the only outlier. We certainly, what we do when we get, uh, exam, we get exam score reports in the summertime. We review item analysis by teacher, uh, and then we look at students and how they perform generally as relates to their grade and how they were, uh, scored on their exam. So, there's a lot of item analysis work that happens in the summer through Mrs. Monopoly, Mrs. Flynn, uh, and, and the teachers at home, who, although they're not quote, quote-unquote, working, they're working at home. The advanced placement teachers certainly are looking at their grades over the summer and finding what they need to do for the coming year. Again, a really good news story for us, if you look, the green bars, the number of students who had qualifying scores this past year, we've increased the number of tests, like I said, by a hundred and eighty-three tests. Traditional thinking would suggest that we open access, scores will drop. That hasn't been the case since we've been here. We've opened access since, uh, two thousand five, two thousand six, I believe. And since that point, it's continually, our scores have continued to maintain, uh, high levels of achievement across the board. So, another really good, a really, uh, highlight for the advanced placement program and the hard work that our teachers are doing with our students, and students and families too. I mean, they're really putting in the effort here, so. Again, we look at everything by subgroup as well. Might be hard to see at home, but this basically breaks down the race and ethnicity of the subgroups and the number of students that participate in the number of exams and the mean score. Again, really strong across the board. We also looked at, uh, English language learners and students with disabilities. When we have less than five students participating in that, we don't report those scores out because they're, they can be identifiable. We looked at also, uh, fee reduction grants that come out. That's a low income. There's thirty-two students that qualify for that that took fifty-five exams and they scored three point seven one average on those exams. And again, by gender, male and female, we had two hundred thirty-four males take exams, two hundred seventy females. Females outpaced with six, six hundred and fifteen exams, males with five hundred forty-five. And again, males, uh, outperformed girls by one hundredth of a point, if that's correct. Three nine six to females, three nine five. But overall, really, really well done, really, really high scores.
Okay, so College Board, um, has a program called Advanced Placement Scholars. And this year, we did very well. We had a hundred and ten AP scholars, which means that these students scored a three or higher on three exams. We had thirty-three students who were an AP scholar with honors. And that's, they scored three point two five on four exams. And then we had ninety students, um, AP scholar with distinction, and that's a three point five average score on five exams. So, we've increased from a hundred and eighty-six scholars from two thousand twenty-four to two hundred and thirty-three in two thousand twenty-five. So, that's pretty remarkable.
We'll answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
And just for clarity on that last piece, if you go back.
Sure.
That's over the course of their entire time. So, for us, that means over junior and senior year.
Junior and senior year, yeah.
So, for example, a student took five APs over junior and senior year and got a three point five average would get that AP scholar with distinction.
Yes, correct.
Question on, so for students who may be lower income. Obviously, if they would like to take AP classes, we would, we want to make sure that they have the opportunity to do that. But what does the process look like for a student who may want to take two, three, four AP classes? But, um, does the cost of it get in the way? Because obviously, I don't want students to not take a class because they can't take that. So, when a student decides, I want to take these AP classes, but there's going to be a financial issue, what does that look like from, from your point of view when you're sitting with them and you're picking classes and setting them up for the following year?
So, it starts with our program of study presentations. We do tell students, you know, that they're expected to take the AP exam if they're in an AP course. There is a fee reduction. We can give them if they have, you know, they need assistance, financial assistance. And then when the counselor sits down with the student one-on-one, we give, you know, more details on that. And then in the fall, when students are enrolled in an AP course, I send a letter home explaining how to register for the exams. And I say in the letter, you know, if you qualify for free reduced lunch, um, please, there's a way you can say that on our total registration is what we use. And then those students, um, if they're approved for free and reduced lunch, the cost for each exam is twenty-two dollars. So, that's very, that's a great cost. That comes from College Board gives us money for students who are low income, and then the state, Dussie, the state of Massachusetts also does. Since I've been here, I've never had a student not be able to pay. Previous years, it was fifteen dollars. This is the first year it's gone up to twenty-two dollars. But I've never had a student who couldn't pay the fifteen dollars per exam. And this is my fifth year, so. And we pretty much have most of our stu-, you know, I would say ninety-nine percent of our students take exams, courses are in.
Yeah, and I think, uh, and we, and that history, I have the historical background here. When people can't afford, we've had hardships that happened between the start of the school year and the end of the school year, where parents may lose jobs or become unemployed or whatnot. And we do have, uh, part of the fee that we collect from students is built in to pay for proctors and rentals of equipment and furniture and all those things. And, uh, what we've done is we have had grants for people who can't afford to pay that. And they, this kind of comes down to reaching out from families and school counselors, kind of knowing the circumstance, what's happening with families. So, we have done that. It's somewhat of an outlier, but we do have subsidized a hundred percent of exams for people at times. But it doesn't happen frequently, I would say.
Thank you.
I'm really glad to see the number of students increasing taking AP exams. It's something, and I think it was when your tenure started, Mr. Bizidlo, it was a different, it was different. It was, it was hard for some students, I mean, they felt they could, but it was just the way that you were able to enroll in AP, and this is a long time ago. And I, I do remember you kind of championing, like, getting more students to push themselves to be able. And I think this is a great opportunity, because there may be a student who is doing great because they, they were encouraged where it was before, it was, it was a little different. So, I'm really happy to see the number of students increasing because it's adding, again, if they can take these courses and possibly even have a semester less of college costs, a great thing for their families as well. So, I'm really happy to see that we're increasing. And I think all of the scores, whether they be SAT or AP, are just a testament to the type of district we have and the amount of work that our staff puts in. Because these are those data points that show that the curriculum is rigorous and our students are able to keep up and do very well. So, thank you for all the work that you're doing and all the staff's work.
I have a few questions.
Sure.
Maybe some of them, maybe, uh, education for myself, so.
Sure.
So, I see the, the, between the MCAS scores, so MCAS, we have E, um, math high gra-, high, high grading, and then ELA is a little low, whereas in the SATs, we have the reverse trend. Is there a difference why, between those two?
Yeah, I'd, it'd be hard to say. I would, sure, I think a couple, I think a couple of things that schools are up against right now. The change in the requirements for a diploma through passing MCAS at grade ten. I think there, we've talked about this a bit at the high school leadership team level. In terms of last year, we had a change. The state came in with a new software package, which presented a lot of glitches with it. So, uh, the stamina for students trying to move through a, a new software package that wasn't, uh, it had quirks and it wasn't ideal. I think the stamina was an issue. I also think there are students, and we, we talk a lot about MCAS at the high school, and we have class meetings before MCAS because we want to, you know, it's our best opportunity for our students to put their best foot forward and show the community and the state what type of community we are as, as, uh, learners. So, I do wonder in my head, like, how many students, uh, gave it a hundred percent? I'd like to think everyone did, but I'm wondering about that. I also wonder how much the impact the software package had on it. I think when you look at SATs, not everyone takes SATs, uh, as well. You saw the participation rate was seventy-five percent, where everyone from MCAS takes a hundred percent, have to take it. So, there's a variety of factors in there. Uh, I would say this, um, I think across the board, and I haven't, I, I don't think I've written about this in a weekly update, but I think reading, and I know that literacy is a major, literacy and numeracy, but literacy is a major factor for us of like having kids read. Read for pleasure, continually read. It's like, uh, going to the gym and exercising. You have to read to get better at reading. The more you read, the better you are at some of these exams, certainly. So, the focus that, uh, the district has taken, K-12 around reading is really important. But I, I can't stress enough the importance of nine through twelve students reading, especially in the summer, to continue their, continue the academic growth. So, I think that's probably two, maybe two factors that have happened, uh, between the two tests and the performance. That could be two things, but again, we don't have any real data on it. I'm just, my mind wonders like why that happened, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
My other two questions, if I, very quick, very quickly. So, with the AP placements scores, um, the grading and the participation and everything, is that directly correlating to the better placements in colleges? Do we have a correlation to that?
Yeah, so I would say no. But again, I'm not a college admissions officer, and you can help me on this one. I would say no. I do think that colleges want to see students push themselves to the, to the best, the best, take the most rigorous, rigorous schedule they can. They also, admissions officers will tell us, they don't want, uh, just a transcript of all advanced placement courses. They want students to participate in rich activities such as theater and speech and debate, and robotics, and athletics, and clubs and activities, whatever their passion may be. Colleges and universities are looking for people to come to make an impact on their, and engage within their community, be a part of the community versus just having numbers on, on, uh, a transcript. I do think that, uh, I do think that some people believe that if the more APs you have, the more likely you're going to get into a selective college and university. We've never really pushed that narrative here. We've always pushed, you have to find where you feel like you fit. Visiting college campuses and feeling like finding your people or the vibe of the campus is really important. We've had people that have been accepted to really selective colleges and have said no because it's one very, very competitive and not collaborative, based on the vibe they got from their visiting. And that was, you know, so we chose somewhere else, which was really great, you know, one school over another school. So, I think that's what we continue to focus on with our students, so there's no real formula for it. I do think that participation in advanced placement does prepare students for the rigor that they're going to see in college. I think they have more, better outcomes in terms of retention in college as a result of participation. And I think that when you're surrounded by really smart people, um, sometimes that raises, that raises the whole tide. So, you can actually learn from people in those really rich environments, which I think is part of the, part of the strength of our community, right? It's the, it's the intellectual depth of our community and also the, the sheer number of students we have, who are really high-performing students.
Thank you. One more, my last question is, um, so all the MCAS is compared to the ACDC and, uh, what do we call, um, the DART districts. ACDC means Asa Red Valley, I, I just, it's not a real norm, uh, short form. Asa Red Valley Collaborative Districts, and then the DART districts, right? But when the, the SATs and everything, we're comparing just to state, so it's.
Yeah, so what we, what we've done in the past is we have actually, and we could do this in the future. We've actually looked at, we've actually looked at, uh, reached out to similar districts that we would not consider DES East DART districts. But for instance, I always look at Westford Academy, which is the public high school in Westford. They're very, very similar to us, very similar community, very similar demographics, socioeconomic, and also performance and, uh, all those things, very similar. Franklin is very similar as well. Acton Boxborough is another one we look at. That's not in the Asa Red Valley, but those are all communities. We've gone to, looked at the Wellsies and the Newtons and the Westons and the Brooklines and the Cambridge Ridge Latin as well, to see how we compare as well. We can certainly get those, that information for you. I, I would also say, I'm not sure how many of those communities actually do a report like this to their committees as well. I think some of this stuff isn't, isn't, and I, I haven't looked. When we do these things, we usually make a phone call to someone and say, what do you have for results, and can you share them with us, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the report. It's a very good news story, uh, for sure. I'm very pleased to see that fifty-eight more students took AP classes, um, last year and that fifty perc-, fifty-seven percent of the class of two thousand twenty-five at least took one AP. So, that's just, it's a huge percentage of the, the class. I did have a question about logistics, since there's a hundred and eighty-three more tests that were administered last year, just kind of how that's, was dealt with. Because that just seems like a lot, a big increase in one year and just logistically, how you guys handled that.
It is challenging. So, myself and another counselor, Tammy Young, we coordinate the AP exams every year. We do, um, have two, we use the Field House, we use the Dance Studio, and then we have a lot of students who have accommodations, so we have to use separate classrooms for that. So, it's kind of one big puzzle piece. And College Board also says you have to have so many proctors per student. So, luckily, we have a really good bank of proctors that are either retired or people in the community that we have known. It is a challenge. I mean, we, we had last year, I think, EP Lang had a hundred and seventy students in the Field House or close to. You know, and you have ten proctors in there. It's pretty much all online now, so you have to deal, we have tech people on call in case we need that. So, it, it's, we do it and it works, it works, but it's, you know, it's a major part of two weeks in May that we're, to kind of take, we're, you know, taking offline a little bit and then do our other ones later.
It's incredibly challenging, given the space constraints we have. The Field House is essentially shut down for two weeks, and last year in particular, we had rainy days. So, the kids, students that are in physical education report that auditorium. Auditorium has band chorus orchestra in there because we don't have space there. When it rains, we have problems. So, we pray for not only no rain at graduation, um, but also the first two weeks of May to have good weather. Didn't necessarily happen last year. We've, a long time ago, we didn't administer exams on the high school campus at all. We actually had business partner, community partners, we could move and visit their auditoriums and conference spaces, and students would get directions on how to drive there, how to get there, what time to get there, how to get through security in some of these places. Ms. Fritz is shaking her head, so her kids probably went through that, uh, which was nice for the high school. Probably stressful for students and families, but we've outgrown every single one of those spaces in the area. And to rent a ballroom at an area hotel, we priced it out, I think it was thirty-five thousand dollars or something, so. Cost prohibitive. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So, yeah, we have certainly a challenge, and we, I want to, uh, thank our physical education department, who weathers this every year of managing and they're super flexible around it. It's not ideal, but they have been really supportive of our work down there. And we're taking up basically the entire Field House and the Dance Studio is, it's, it's incredibly challenging. It sets up challenges for them without a doubt.
Thank you. Dr. Sawyer?
I appreciate, uh, the rapport and the information.
I appreciate the rapport and the information. A couple of quick items to Mr. Villa Caputi's question. I can see like on the Department of Education that they're, they lag behind in publishing SAT information, that they're like twenty-three, twenty-four is the most recent information they have. But in looking at some of our typical comparison districts, one of the other key pieces is that our participation rate, even the participation rate has come down post-COVID. We have a lot more participation than a lot of other comparison districts, right? So, it's a little bit of sometimes in some school communities, that participation is not as high and students who might be encouraging to take the test to give themselves options might not be somewhere else. That's another factor that we have to consider and our, and our scores are very favorable to our comparison groups. But it's not always purely apples to apples. It's kind of a tricky piece. Unlike MCAS where everyone takes it, it's a little bit more of a easier to compare district to district. To amplify what Ms. Boucher was saying earlier, the College Board has not published the twenty twenty-five data yet, but the twenty twenty-four data is that of public high school graduates in the country, twenty-two percent of graduates scored a three or higher on an AP exam. In Massachusetts, which is the top state, about thirty-three percent of graduating high school students scored a three or higher. And that's compared to in terms of, you know, essentially thirty-five percent of students nationally even taking an AP. We have fifty-seven percent of our students by the time they graduate are, you know, taking an AP exam and essentially ninety percent of them are getting a three. That's remarkably strong performance. And, you know, I think when, you know, to, to talk a little bit about what college admissions offices look for and we've had college admissions officers here and we've done our strategic planning and certainly Ms. Lynn's department connects and is in contact with them and through communications with schools and conferences and whatnot. We know that when we provide our profile to those college admissions officers, they know and understand, you know, what our students have access to, which is the longstanding approach that juniors and seniors at Shrewsbury High have access to AP. And so, you know, that does not, therefore, they're not being compared apples to oranges with a student who's been taking AP classes in a school that has to start taking it freshman year, which was not our philosophy. So, and again, we continue to see, as we saw from our future plans reports, our students getting access to the most selective schools in, in the country. It's not, it has not become an impediment and we have heard repeatedly, it isn't just a numbers game like, well, the more APs you have, the better. They're looking at things holistically. Certainly, they want to see students challenging themselves and I think that our counseling staff does a nice job and our families in having conversations around what's a reasonable load for an individual student based on their academic profile. There are some students who can handle a very high number of AP classes and it works for them. There's some where one is a reasonable low, but we want to see them stretching. And I know that's part of our strategic plan and goals. And I know the school improvement plan for the high school is around increasing access to higher level coursework. That includes project lead the way courses as well and our pathways. But, you know, how is it that families, particularly for our students who may not be coming from a household where their parents went to college? They may not have, they may not be originally from this country. They don't have necessarily the, the perspective on how participating AP might help them when it looks to what they do post-graduation of high school. And so, our, you know, we've made more of a conscious effort to be connecting with students in ways to say like this might be, and looking for kids to stretch themselves. And we're still performing extremely well, but, you know, frankly, the idea of taking the course in the first place is something that we think can really benefit a lot of students. That's something I think we're going to continue to look at. How do we continue to strengthen that? But overall, this is a remarkably strong set of results. And I think that it, it puts us, our, our students in a really strong position to be able to have good choices of what they do after they leave Shrewsbury High School. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the state MCAS testing annual report. Each year, the administration provides a report on the district's performance on state exams. Ms. Clouder will summarize the enclosed report on the results of the twenty twenty-five MCAS exams and be available to answer our questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the extensive reading that you did on my behalf this week. I apologize that it's a lengthy report and that we're starting late. So, I'll keep it tight with the goal of encouraging everybody who's watching at home and anyone who's passionate about the subject to kind of delve into the details there. Although MCAS is pretty familiar at this point, there were two new things happening last year and when we started ongoing testing. Draw your attention here to, this is the schedule for last year in one district. What do you notice is the new addition? Civics. We had a civics exam administered for the first time, so you'll notice in your book that we had the results there. For us, that was a point of success with sixty-six percent of our eighth graders receiving a proficient or better score as compared to only thirty-nine percent of the state. So, you may have seen the headlines, you know, bemoaning civics challenges and certainly we want that number to go up, but that is not a problem that we're looking to solve. We've got other problems to solve, which I'll talk about soon. And then the other piece which Todd mentioned is that as a result of the statewide vote, MCAS is no longer a requirement for graduation, which presents a challenge about communicating the importance of the test to busy high school students with other priorities. I think a lot of credit goes to Todd and his team at Shrewsbury High School for taking the time to explain the scholarship opportunities and the value of the test that likely helped to minimize the impact on the scores that some other districts saw. Every year, I look at a new metaphor because I, I know you've seen this report several times. And I think of, you know, everyone is familiar with the, this station is conducting a test of the emergency broadcast system, just as students are familiar with the cadence of what an MCAS experience is like. And I think that for us, it's, I can't say it enough that the MCAS remains a really important test of the system at all grades. And it's a signal both of kind of the strength of the impact, how well students are mastering the standards in all those content areas that they're tested on, but also kind of the, the extent of the reach. How far is what you've learned as a third grader sticking as you go to fourth and fifth grade? And so, I, I think the results serve all schools and grades and performing well kind of helps us think a little bit about how we can do even better. But certainly when our, our results are disappointing, it's a cause for a lot of soul searching and kind of a more in-depth analysis. And Todd and Angie talked a little bit about what that looks like at the high school. It's not dissimilar at other levels. So, when we're looking at MCAS results, we consider these three questions as district leaders. Kind of what do we see as strengths? What do we see as persistent gaps? And how does the information that we're getting from this one assessment inform or contribute to the discussion about what we're seeing overall in terms of student performance? And what we see here is that, you know, it's, remains the case that Shrewsbury scores are higher than the state average, but that's not something that we celebrate. That's pretty typical for us. Our math scores are clearly our strength with our percentage of students meeting or exceeding up from sixty-four percent in grade three to eight last year. And in grade ten for us, we continue to see strong scores hold despite the change in terms of the requirement for graduation. And also, I think we see in science, and you can see this in your report, kind of our, our pre-pandemic achievement scores kind of coming back. That's only tested in grades five, eight and ten, but another signal of kind of a, a content area coming back to our pre-pandemic levels. But I'm sure that the part of the story you're waiting for is kind of the, what's happening with ELA because that's certainly top of mind for me when I look at these scores. And that's still an area that I, I don't want to gloss over the work we have yet to do there. So, when we think about opportunities for improvement and we talk about math scores getting closer to pre-pandemic levels, that's not yet the case for ELA. We are not an outlier in terms of how scores in ELA were impacted by the pandemic and I'm sure the graphs in your report and I'll, I'll show those in a little bit, kind of explain that. But the pace of the recovery is disappointing. And, you know, we've, we've got a lot of thinking about that and I'll go into more detail in, in our next slides. So, what you see here is that we saw a slight improvement in grades three to eight. I remain deeply concerned about student proficiency in terms of the English Language Arts standards because implementing a new curriculum and shifting our practice has been a key focus for us. But also, and probably more so because it's, because it's been a key focus, I've been in classrooms at every level in this district to see how hard teachers are working to shift their practice and to incorporate the new curriculum. So, I know from the research that high quality instructional materials are part of what helps us reach that success for students. I see our teachers working hard to shift their practice. I can't help but believe that we will see the fruition of those efforts. And although I say, you know, we've been working really hard, we're only approaching year two of the curriculum and I'm not sharing that as an excuse, but more kind of, I guess I'm on to to kind of stay the course, both for our educators who are working hard at home and I'm sure as disappointed as I am to not see a bigger result. I'm particularly concerned frankly for the, the continued drop at grades five and six because that's an outlier for us as a district. And I give the administrative team and the teachers at Sherwood credit for really rolling up their sleeves and looking at those results this year. Having shored up foundational skills in the past two years, I think now we need to think about how we implement the curriculum in a deeper, in a deeper way and how we build on the momentum that we've seen in other grades for our middle schoolers. That's, on that note, when we looked at the slight increase in grades three to eight, part of that was due to the big gains that we saw in grade seven and eight at Oak. So much so that Oak was named as a school of recognition. That's terrific in itself. It's a good opportunity to kind of shout out that they had similar gains in math. But these gains kind of offset kind of the, the drop that we saw at five and six. So, we're talking in general about kind of a grade span of three to eight, but I think narrowing our focus to really look at the middle grades is, is something I took away from this report. And again, while these results are disappointing to me, these are our Asa-Valley districts. So, the, the line in pink is the state. Again, we typically see that spread between where we are in the blue and the state. But looking at the shape of the line is kind of the first thing I do when I'm looking at our disappointing results to say, am I, how much company do I have in our disappointing results? I think as you see from nearby districts, we're still trying to get back to where we were pre-pandemic in English Language Arts. I think the, the district that's the one to watch really is Arlington, which is one of our DART districts. They're this top line here and they stand out to me because they're in the same implementation year as we were for EL. So, they have the same program, but they had better results. They are noted by the state as one of the few districts that was able to kind of get back to pre-pandemic scores in ELA. So, we are headed to Arlington as a curriculum team to kind of try and figure out what's the secret sauce for them? What did implementation look like? What can we learn from that around mid-November? With a whole list of questions that our, our coaches have come up with and even our teacher teams as they've looked at data because all of us are committed to doing better by our students. And on that note, kind of when our teams look at the results, I think there's a lot of things that we look at. So, we look at, you know, how do subject area results inform us? Like, why are we seeing a more rebound in math and science than ELA? We look at what are the experiences of a given cohort? Who was disrupted when and what did that mean? We look at kind of the item analysis of when we look at how we did relative to DART districts on some of the specific question types, are we seeing, you know, discrepancy and what are those? If the state releases them, what are we seeing that we can benefit from? And I'll, I'll get into more detail as an example about that. And then anecdotal information, you know, teachers are not supposed to interact with students, but they can't help but notice if a kid is, you know, given a writing prompt and they put a question mark on their textbook in their, in their iPad and then just stop. And, and so, thinking about stamina from a writing perspective is something that we've heard from our teachers. But also, we conduct instructional rounds and I'm in classrooms, principals are in classrooms on a regular basis, kind of thinking about what are some places in the implementation that have been clunky and how can we streamline things for teachers so that we're benefiting from places where we see the pacing being on par? And what are those teachers doing that can help their colleagues? And we certainly are very grateful for the pilot teachers who now are in their third year because they've been a source of a lot of wisdom. But this was a, an example of kind of the work I do on the item analysis front with the curriculum teams. And reassuring, this was a, an open-ended kind of response that the state did release to us. There's good news and bad news here. You can see that these are some of the item descriptions of what kids are being asked to do. The circled column is how well we did on the reading skills. So, you can see here, can I move my cursor yet? That here, where the arrows are, there are some places where we want to look at that item particularly because it was two points. So, scoring lower on that is not, you know, probably contributes to our overall drop in scores. So, we want to think, okay, how do we help kids think about the particular sections of a passage as they're reading? Where are some opportunities for us to do that? And I was really surprised to see kids struggling with how the main idea and the title are connected. That, that seems like a relatively easy fix when we're talking about and discussing text with kids. This is from the third grade MCAS. But they were reading a passage about this man who rode a bicycle across, across the country in the eighteen hundreds. And, you know, the wind in his mustache gives you a sense about the difference from athletes then and athletes now. But our reading scores are, you know, our responses on most of those reading questions are pretty affirming of the work that kids are being asked to do in the curriculum aligning with the work that they're asked to do on MCAS. The place where was kind of a clear, this is the second year we've had this signal about writing, is that they were asked to write an essay that explains how he overcomes the challenges he experiences on his journey. Be sure to use information from the passage. Should develop your essay. And at this point, every third grade teacher knows in the district, when we started to do the item analysis, they were like, module one of EL, they talk about how schools, kids that attend schools around the world overcome challenges. So, was it the writing? Was it the stamina? Was it the not being able to transfer from reading one text about how you overcome schools' challenges to how somebody from long ago might overcome a challenge? These are things that we will parse as we have kids do more quick writing to try to learn more about that. But I think writing, because it's only increases in terms of the amount of writing kids do, is a logical opportunity for us. This is helpful too because in terms of looking at, you know, why are we seeing, where we're seeing, grades five and six who have the, you know, the most concerning scores, were disrupted at foundational years. And we've been really fortunate and grateful to have your support in adding reading specialists to help us fill those gaps foundationally. But it's really hard if you're filling foundational gaps to also then close comprehension gaps because having fluency is the very first indicator of your comprehension strength. And I think it'd be interesting to see what that looks like as, as kids age out because our, this is last year's third grade, our current fourth grade were really minimally disrupted. And they will have had two years now of a curriculum. We would hope to see that that trajectory starts to go up. The other way we really look at this is different cohorts of students. And I know you've heard, talk about subgroups and you asked some really good questions about that. One of the things we really look to see is how well different, different groups of students perform. This is all students in the dark blue. The lighter blue is English learners. The orange is low-income students and the yellow is students with disabilities. And if you recall these graphs from last year, we've seen a real increase in, in narrowing the distance between all students and English learners. We've had kind of consistency in, when raising the rates of low-income students and, and their success. But one of the things that we look at here is, you know, what, what are the barriers for students with disabilities and how can we serve them better? So, how does this compare with other assessment information? MCAS is a moment in time in the spring and I think it's part of a bigger picture. So, when we think about assessments, we think about formative assessments and summative assessments. I really like this analogy about, you know, when the cook tastes the soups, that's formative. But when you serve it to another person, that's summative, right? You can't go back from that taste that they're going to get in their mouth. And I think teachers are really skillful at using formative assessments to kind of check. They certainly get the results for their students if they receive, you know, if they're fourth grade. On a teacher, they research the scores for their third grade from the. From the previous third grade results and they also receive the results of their. Now fifth grade students who were in their classes, fourth graders. And they look at them for different purposes. But the star screeners are much more frequent, uh, three times a year administration that helps us really look at student progress. And think, okay, what is the data story that's told from looking at the star screening results, the MCAS results and and student work? And we have put structures in place, teachers have worked really hard to put structures in place where we look at that data. Um, and what after we administer the screener in an in-depth way three times a year, we discern. And who needs tiered as assessment? Most of our students benefit from uh, tier two, which is um, intervention. And support provided at the classroom level. And then um. There are on the moment, on the fly adjustments that teachers make as they monitor student work and kind of see uh, what students are producing. And um, I've certainly by virtue of instructional rounds, seen, seen teachers do that, you know, they're scanning the workbooks or they're looking at writing samples and saying, okay, you three. Come sit with me, let's focus a little bit more. Or thinking about the wind blocks that we've added to our schedules so that kids have a dedicated time where they're getting their individual needs met. And strengthening our data culture has really helped us strengthen our scores. This kind of looks at the, the number of kids receiving tiered support that I referenced uh, a slide ago. Um, we looked at kind of how, how many kids are qualifying as a result of the fall screener. And you can see the numbers of kids requiring tiered support has been dropping. So our work in foundational skills, the addition of the reading specialist is helping. And I think as kids grow in fluency, we would expect that now they would be able to to comprehend at a higher rate. The other piece here is, you know, we talked about bright spots, that was one of them. The other bright spot is looking at growth scores and um, the state defines kind of. Uh, the growth windows being between forty and sixty, where we're more comfortable, or at least I'm more comfortable with fifty and above. Because that's what it takes to kind of accelerate student learning. You can't have a year's worth of growth if you're more than a year's behind. And so seeing higher rates of growth in seven, eight, I'm sure is also. Illustrates kind of the, the cross between student growth and achievement scores. And Todd mentioned this, it's just like if he was a perfect plant, um, we talk about parents as partners all the time. And I think part of the, part of the root cause analysis we do has to do very specifically to. How well did we do in terms of the implementation? What can we learn from the item analysis? But we're also grappling with bigger things like having more kids that move in um, in middle school. So they haven't really been with us, but they still take the test with us. Having kids that are chronically absent, and it's hard to kind of make up lost ground for kids that aren't in school. Uh, one of the trends that we see for thirteen year olds, that this came out in twenty twenty-three, so it doesn't surprise me that people missed it. Cause we had other priorities there. But this shows how, how many kids at thirteen report, um, the frequency with which they read. So if you just look at, you know, when you think about nineteen eighties, how many kids reported that they never or hardly ever read, which is the red line. Look at the dramatic increase um, in re- kids reading for pleasure. Weekly reading is the green line. And you know, that's, that's a dramatic decline. So if you're listening with a student at home. Um, the best way to get better at reading is to be reading. Um, I think it's a wake up call for parents to make sure that they are also modeling reading. They're protecting time for reading, um, because the juxtaposition of this story is how much time. So what are kids doing if they're not reading? I, I'd like every parent to kind of look at that question with their own kids in mind. Because the return on reading is so strong, um, that I think we'd be remiss not to point that out. But essentially, we continue to work on kind of fostering belonging, uh, making sure kids are having consistent experiences within and across grades. And also looking coherently at how the curriculum is structured so that kids become more skillful readers and writers. And that will remain our focus, uh, because we're, we're really motivated to have this be a trend that we can reverse. I'd welcome any questions that you have. So more people look at it, what we're talking.
I, I really appreciate the amount of work our teachers, our staff, you put into the students. Every day. Do we have work to do? Absolutely. Um, for me. The MCAS is important, but it's just one data point. And I really look at everything else that we have between STAR. Our literacy program, the um, tiered support, there are so many different benchmarks that we have that we're. Continuously checking the pulse of where our students are. Those for me, I weigh that a little bit differently because I, I think. I think we have a better pulse on it. This is just one day. This is one week where these students are sitting there for a full day. They're stressed out about taking this big test. This isn't as, for me. As big of an issue, just because, um, like I'll, I'll say for like one of my students. Um, who is in, would have been in the grade five cohort, did not do very well on the MCAS. I'm not worried about her ability to read and comprehend because I've seen the work that's come home from. Um, the work that she's had in the classroom. I've seen, um, I've had conversations with teachers. Those are the, those are the data points, those are the conversations that I put a little bit more stock into. Do we have things that we have to work on? Absolutely. But there's, I, I just want to highlight, there's so much work and I don't want our staff to get discouraged that they. Are doing something that's not working, or they aren't doing something that's not working because the. The data is not showing where we would love to be. And I'm, I'm, I'm glad that you're going to Arlington and if they have some secret. Um, that they want to share with us, then that's great and we can, we can work to implementing it. I spent a lot of time with this report trying to think probably, just like you were doing on like. Like grade three to me was a little mind boggling that we went from being pre pandemic. Eighty, I think it was like eighty percent to now we're at fifty-nine percent. And for me, those students, they weren't even in formal school yet. So it's not necessarily like they lost something. So then I was like, well, wh- what is it? So their writing scores weren't so great. Well, I have a third grader right now and even though we take the MCAS on an iPad and kids are so adept at using iPads. She's learning how to type right now while also learning how to read and form sentences. Is that a disconnect? When they're actually sitting there and they're a little stressed about, they know how to read. You know, the essay and they know what they want to say, but it just doesn't come out. Or maybe it's the typing, like they're just. For me, there's other circumstantial stuff that is that, that's what's getting in the way. That might be across the state too, it's not necessarily just us, but. I appreciate, I just, I mean, this is really just to say, I appreciate the work that's going into it and we have so many shining spots in our district. And again, there is work to do, but um, for me, this is just a moment in time kind of data set. Um, that whatever we can do to get students so that those numbers can go up, we're here to do that. Um, but I just don't want students and staff to be discouraged by this, or you to be discouraged by this because. We have a bigger story that is telling and we just had. Uh, Mr. Bizidlo and Angie Flynn in here, where we have more and more students that are taking harder classes, they're doing really well, our SAT scores, so. Something, something's working. We are producing students that are, are smart and ready to take on the world. So for this, this seems just like, for me, a little bump in the road that we will eventually get them on track, but.
Thank you for that support and I'm sure every teacher watching really appreciates it.
And, and I agree, this is just one test and we have many assessments that we will use. I'll be interested to see. When you report on the STAR assessment for this year to see how it compares with these results. Cause this again, it's one point, but I do have some concern over our lack of seeing a little more improvement. And I, I just wonder, you know, are we overthinking? Because I think we're working really hard, our staff is working really hard. Are we overthinking how? We're implementing and I'm using my own experience in private business when things are given to us to do and there's change. And sometimes we overthink, like we just have to do and then see how it goes as you move forward, cause that kind of flushes out some of. The better ways to do things or tweaks or things that really that did, that doesn't work. Um, so I think there's, that there's a lot of components that we have to look at, but I, I am concerned in the writing component. You know, I would hope that. I, uh, my understa- I, not my understanding, but I, I would just think looking at reading, comprehension and writing kind of all go together. So if someone is reading and comprehending, I'm hoping that there's that writing component because I think we're lagging behind now in the writing, maybe we focus too much. Cause we're trying to do a lot. But again, I just, I just keep thinking, are we overthinking how we're doing it? Cause the more we delve in. Things kind of flush out and you know, looking at that cohort, kind of that fifth, sixth level. And I know, I mean, COVID's definitely an issue, but I think we have to kind of move away and look at. What can we do to get those students as, as up to benchmark as we can because the longer they go without. Those skills, the harder it's just gonna be. And I did have one question or in, in, as a parent, I remember looking at MCAS tours or. And if someone's child is partially meeting or not meeting. Can you give an example of what, what does the school, what was a school do? If that child's identified, like what is the process or plan for teachers? Cause that to me is where the rubber meets the road. If this child isn't meeting, what are we doing to then provide the services? Because we're, we've got a great program in place, but how do we implement that with a child who's identified?
So I talked a little bit about um, how we look at, at the um. Results in context, right? So i- if you got those results back for your, for your uh, students, the first thing you would do is kind of look at. How does this compare to what I see in class and how does it compare in terms of what the STAR report is saying? It might be that you have a kid who has a low MCAS score but is doing just fine. In fact, some of the kids that we tried to organize tutoring for that were leaving grade eight. Um, and scoring un- under the benchmark for on STAR. Um, are doing just fine in their English nine courses and I'm scratching my head a little bit about that. So we don't necessarily feel that they all need the tutoring that we thought that they would need to be successful because they've getting really good grades in their English courses. So um, I think we, we need to look at and kind of triangulate the data, which means to kind of check uh, for consistency and see. Are they describing the same child? Because there might be variation from the same kid from one day to the next. Um, there, there's also for some kids who are aware of it, the factor of like there was a widespread rumor MCAS wouldn't count. And I think it is required, it does count. Um, but it's mostly not to scare kids, but to make sure that we're getting the best read of where kids' ability are. So if I saw that a student was um, really underperforming in writing, I would make sure that as a teacher. I'm monitoring that student's writing and providing some supports depending on where their writing fell down. Um, and similarly with reading skills, that we're looking to see, you know, within the cohort of, of kids and, and we have data tools that can help us sort. What kids need, what kind of standards covered. Um, and I, and you know, skillful teachers do that work. And think about where are opportunities in, in the lessons that I'm teaching now to give kids who needed a little bit of extra.
Thank you for that. And I also am happy you mentioned about, you know, the per- the parental component. It's huge. I mean, I think as families look at. Their student success, they're a huge part of that. And you know, there is a lot of screen time, we know that seems to be taking away from other. Things maybe we would read because we didn't have a screen back in the day. So I think, you know, having parents become more of a partner. To help us at home with those types of items is huge. And I think that's something we just need to do more asking of.
Yeah, and it might be that, you know, this isn't the trend in Shrewsbury, um, but I think it's a good question for parents to kind of wrestle with. It made me sit back and think, okay. How, how much independent reading is happening in the lives of the children that I know?
Right, right, but thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you for the report. Um, you know, I, I keep going back to what you said about this being a moment in time. And sometimes I feel like a, a lot of times as a parent of, of now two graduates, kind of building up to. Receiving the results for MCAS just seems like a bit of a distraction, right? And it's, it's one uh, test. It's a good gauge, you know, and, and it kind of gives you some insights into kind of where you need to focus your efforts, but. It, it, it from my perspective, it dra- distracts from the bigger picture about all the other things that are happening outside of the MCAS to. Drive better results. Um, I, I think it's a good, I think it's a good idea to, you know, partner with uh. Districts like Arlington to kind of see what they're doing, uh, maybe sharing best practices, but. I, I agree with Mr. Reef, of course, you know, in terms of the morale when it comes to, you know, seeing these results. I, I, I don't want, uh, you know, our team to be distracted by these numbers. And understand that there's, there's a lot of really good work happening to try to improve the results. Um, so. Not, just appreciate transparency behind the scores and kind of what you're doing uh, to improve them. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think um, you covered pretty much everything I'm about to ask. So you, you touched all the points that I'm, I'm, I'm uh, I'm trying to um, get some understanding. So, so my, my couple things, I was looking, Mr. Briggs also mentioned that, so what, it's about the, what about the ones that are not meeting? Or the, the bottom like forty-four percent of the population. So what we are doing with that. Part, particular cohort, bringing, bringing them up to the rest of the class, rest of the cohorts. Um, grades, uh, or level. Um, and I'm also trying to see, that's a good thing that you're uh, recognized. Because they see recognize that Arlingtoners are doing the best thing, um, bringing back the scores to the pre pandemic levels and, and their efforts. So learning from the best is obviously a good example as a part of continuous improvement. And also, um, the one I'm, I'm looking at, two, two points here is. I like the breakdown of the English, English um, comprehension, where the scoring is. So do we do, do we have a similar one for math? So we can see the comparison? So do we?
I can show you a little bit of what that looks like. Um, so the state gives you. A report that looks like this, this happens to be a grade five ELA report. You can see where our questions are kind of at the state level, which to me is an indicator of like what's happening for us there. Cause we're usually outperforming the state. On the right in, in the state um, data portal would be a list of um, a live link to those items if they released it. You know, what, what's frustrating about this one is that this one, we were really low, they don't release, uh, they'll tell you what it's, what it's asking, which was making an inference. Um, about a character, but they, um, but similarly in math, you would see this, so you could see. You know, what strand of math, um, are students struggling with and if they had a problem to solve, uh, they would release some example problems. Uh, and we, we'd be able to use that and think about, how does that juxtapose with our curriculum?
One other, maybe just uh, came through my, my mind as you're showing the reading ma- metrics and everything. So is that. I'm not, I'm not suggesting, but uh, just a thought here, uh, is that correlation to, because I think math. Efficiency is improved because we have a lot of tools within the iPads, the school system, where they can do the math by themselves. Practice it using the digital tools. The same thing may be not helping when it's come to ELA, the English reading, because I, so personally at my home, I, I can't. Understand what my kid did with the, the, she says, oh, I'm done with the book. It's like, where is the book? I'm like, it's on my iPad. I'm finished. So did you understand it? So what, what is the, of the, the gist of the whole thing as I do it? So there is no way to really con- like, or understand what they have comprehended from reading that whole book. Uh, as a, you know, the digital tool, but in math, it's helping, the digital tools are helping, but not necessarily in the ELS. That's my.
We do have some digital tools. I think the research about how helpful it is for kids to really read. Uh, books you hold in your hand versus reading on screen are compelling, so we've been trying to emphasize more of that. But there are tools like Freckle built into STAR where you could, a teacher, and sometimes they do this for homework, assigns a reading that then has some. Um, you know, multiple choice questions that would give you that information. Um, and as part of a what I need block or extra support, kids might get some things like that too. I think the, I, I'm reluctant to have kids spend more time on screen in school. Because the, the research that I've been reading lately particularly is emphasizing that the, the kids that. The reading the kids are doing is happening with us and we have them for a short amount of time. So the time that we have them, I'd rather that they work within complex text, um, and some of those tools you might see more at home. But that's, that's something I'll follow up with to see like, what's being sent home because I, I think by grade that varies a little bit within the program.
Yeah, true. No, but it looks like a, there's an oper- every time we see a red in, in the business. No, but it looks like a, there's an opportunity, every time we see a red in, in the business, in our business, we, we, we really don't get scared, we just see an opportunity to improve. And then, so we look, we look, we dig deep in, where, what's the, what's the root cause? I think you nailed, you touched on all those points, root causes, you, so you came prepared, so I'm very happy for that. Thank you for that whole presentation, and looking into, in a more positive way. Opportunity to improve is what we, we need to look for, rather than getting worried about the, what the current state is. So, yeah, maybe Arlington will provide us some, some insights, and maybe we're doing something internally with math, where we can also learn what's happening at the math learnings, where we can implement them into ELA also. So, yeah, I'm looking forward to the feedback on those trips and analysis. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the report. For folks at home, it'll be released tomorrow, it's an eighty-page report, if people are interested in really digging deep into the numbers, and there's a lot of really good information in there. I just wanted to thank you for your candor about reporting out on this. I did have a question with regard to student stamina, and I think, you know, with regard to writing and reading and attention spans, and given math is more discreet, you do a problem and move on, whereas you're engaging with texts that are complex, and writing is, you know, more, have you looked into that? Or is that something that is being explored? Or, you know, just in this age of looking at things, very, people are, attention spans are very, you know, much more limited, and, you know, is that something to kind of, trying to strengthen those with kids, to try to have them really focus for longer periods of time on complicated material?
I'm really glad that you raised that point, because one of the things the research is showing is that attention is foundational for reading success. And I think that we've all, not just kids, but adults too, have been trained to have shorter attention spans by virtue of the devices we use. And the research about, you know, we've talked about this at the high school level, with the cell phone policy, the role that even having a device that's nearby, if it's plugged in, but, and you're not even looking at it, has in distracting you and having you kind of look over it is important. I think so, too. It, it's like, what is it? The adage is, we, we, we wired, we fire the way we're wired. So we, we, the more we do something, and the more we get used to explaining, you know, reading something and having it switch, the more we're looking for that with other devices. So I, I think, I think attention is an important factor. I think it's one of the things that's really lovely about a book, that I certainly valued as a kid, is being able to kind of open up a book and fall into another world, and kind of escape and be fully immersed in that world. And I think in order to do that, you've got to find how do you match a kid with a book? And every teacher knows that moment where you find the right series for a kid, and they just dig in. I think we need to do more of that, more watching of that. I'm certainly mindful of, you know, what do our classroom library practices look like? And what's our diet of reading on the iPad versus reading physical books? Which is not to say that the iPad is not a great tool. I think in, as we think about the writing, there's some real opportunities for kids to communicate with audiences beyond their class by using the iPad. But I think making sure we're using it less as a consumption device and more as a creation device is another thing that's top of mind for me, because I think all devices for not just students, but for adults are playing a role in shortening our attention span. And just as there's research here about kids doing less reading, there's a, a lot of research about the shortening of everyone's collective attention spans. And I, I know often the feedback I get is, that's great, write it in a quicker version, nobody will read it. And, and that's when my audience is adults, so.
Thank you. Dr. Sawyer?
Um, I think, you know, all the points made are excellent ones. I deeply appreciate the, the depth of the report that Ms. Clutter provided to you in her presentation, and want to underscore the really hard work that people are doing in our classrooms, our, our support staff, our paraeducators, our, our teachers, certainly our administrators. I think that we are, we are doing what best practice says are the right things to get kids those foundational skills, and then to grow these pieces. And I think using data to make adjustments and, and looking at it as an opportunity. I know that, that's exactly, I had a recent conversation with Mr. Kelly at Sherwood Middle School, and that's exactly the framing that they're using at Sherwood with, you know, the idea this is an opportunity. But it's a really important one, because, you know, our students, getting these foundational skills that, that show up in these kinds of measures are really important. You know, I, I certainly, at the same time, as was mentioned, I think by Ms. Rifford, I mean, what we see our kids doing by the time they graduate from Shrewsbury High School, we're incredibly proud of. And I, I'm not concerned that, you know, some point differential between another district that is very similar to us, that our kids are showing at college like way behind where those students are. Like, I think we're in a really strong place. But, you know, we also want to be sure that the students who, you know, where this is a signal for us, that we're getting them and bolstering their experience, so that we can be sure that they do get those skills. And so that's something that I think we're working really hard at. I'm very, I'm confident and optimistic, we're going to see that moving in the other direction as we get deeper into our implementation of these practices and new curriculum. I'm, I'm quite confident that's going to be the case. But it's hard work, and I appreciate all the effort people are doing. And to Ms. Fritz's point, not overcomplicating it, like focusing on the really key elements that, you know, make the biggest difference for kids. And, and if families can partner with us in making sure they're reading more and those pieces, that's going to help as well. And I know there's some efforts that we're undertaking to do that as well, so much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the FY twenty-seven draft budget priorities, guidance and calendar. We will be taking a vote this evening. At our last meeting on October fifteenth, Mr. Girardi presented a draft of the fiscal year twenty-seven budget guidelines and priorities and a calendar for the review by the committee in advance of a vote planned for tonight's meeting. The documents were posted to the district website for public view and feedback in advance of the requested vote at tonight's meeting. I don't believe we've received any feedback or comments on the proposed draft. Does anyone have any further comments or questions before we take a vote this evening? Okay. So I would like a motion that the committee vote to approve the fiscal year twenty-two-seven budget priorities, guidance and calendar as presented.
So moved.
All those in favor shall signify by saying aye. Aye. And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is another vote that we need to take. This is regard to appointing Dr. Sawyer to the Aspet Valley Collaborative Board of Directors. The mission of the Aspet Valley Collaborative is to provide effective and efficient service to meet the current and evolving needs of member communities to promote student access and community integration. The AVC Board of Directors meets monthly during the school year and more often as needed. Each year, the committee must vote to appoint the superintendent as representative to the Aspet Valley Collaborative Board of Directors. Dr. Sawyer, do you have any updates for us before we?
Uh, no, no updates at this point, just, this is just a yearly piece to make sure that I'm official as your representative.
Great. Does anyone have any questions or comments on this before we take a vote?
Yep.
Okay. I'd like a motion that the committee vote to appoint Dr. Joseph M. Sawyer, Superintendent of Schools, as a representative to the Aspet Valley Collaborative Board of Directors for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
So moved.
All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Do need to approve some minutes. The minutes from the school committee meeting held on October fifteenth were enclosed in our packets this week. Does anyone have any amendments or changes? Okay, so the committee will accept the minutes as distributed. Thank you. And then the, we do need to go into executive session this evening, so we'll need a motion. We need to go into executive session for the purpose of addressing general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant aid requirements, purpose seven, open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty A, sections twenty-two F and G, for the purpose of reviewing, approving and/or releasing executive, executive session minutes. B, for the purpose of addressing general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigation, litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Purpose three, the Shrewsbury Education Association, units A and/or B, the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association, and/or Cafeteria Workers Association. C, for the purpose of addressing general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, non-union clerical and support staff and/or administrators, purpose two. And D, for the purpose of addressing general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant aid requirements, federal and Massachusetts student record laws, purpose seven, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
This requires a roll call vote. Ms. Fritz?
Aye.
Mr. Wensky?
Aye.
Ms. Sharifahpour?
Aye.
Mr. Veligapudi?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Thank you, and good night.